entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the minutes from February eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Understand things, you know, my understanding here, I'm gonna read what what John has right here. Time reserved for public comment on items or issues not listed on the agenda. Well, so then we had all of those truck stop people come up, right? And that was an item listed on the agenda. So is it that this time is reserved for public comment on any item that's not up for public hearing?
I believe the, yeah, I believe the reason why we took it last time in that way was it was not an official public hearing.
Yeah.
So maybe it needs to say, because like I know there was somebody from Bears Air's partnership online about the vertical bridge and that person didn't speak. And I think that might, and this is when that person should have spoken, right? But so I think it needs to say time reserved for public comment on items not open for public hearing. Because, yeah, all of those items were on the, it it's confusing.
You know, last month, we did a little bit different. Typically, what I do is we'll we'll take comments, not on the agenda during public comment, but then we do allow for comments during the
Okay.
line, the administrative items.
That's why we usually have a representative, like for conditional use, we usually have a representative here to
Yeah.
Okay. But, you know, I I certainly need to make sure people are included.
Yeah, we need it, we do need a clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll continue to take comments during the line item. Okay. All right, public comment.
I'm on Facebook yet.
Public comment on items or issues not listed on the end. Take in-house first.
So you got it on YouTube?
Do we have anybody online?
No. Okay.
Yes.
I'll refresh it.
We'll, we'll do it on number four.
See, that's where they can
Do I have a microphone on?
Three minutes, three minutes, set the timer. So my question is, um, chapter ten of the Spanish Valley ordinance has rules and regulations on how to do, apply for your overlay district. We have certain areas within the commercial zone or other zones that it's can be applied to that are existing. That set of rules does not apply to existing. So we need to have, I mean, a- at this point, what do we do? So we have existing night the rentals that would like to no longer be non-conforming, but there is no uh ordinance of how to get to that. Because everything that's written in chapter ten is for new construction, new builds going up. So how can that be presented? By the public. And I know I can't ask questions, I can't ask questions.
You've asked that question before.
But it needs to be addressed at this point. I know we are online to be changing the ordinance soon, but there's things that need to be done beforehand.
Right now.
Yes.
Um, so I can, I can speak to that just a little bit. So we are hoping, we have a lot of non-conforming use overnight rentals. Some of them were in place prior to two thousand nineteen, some of them not. And so we are looking into how to do that legally and otherwise with the new zoning maps and ordinances. However, in the meantime, even at best, if we get the new zoning ordinances and maps out by July first, we do have rogue properties technically. And um for us to go after as many as there are is going to be a lot, I, we're talking hundreds. Um, not just fifty. Um, so we have actually had that discussion earlier this week and I just had it an hour before. They've been there, they're doing their thing.
That was done legally?
That was done legally with proper building permits um and proper construction and proper safety, they've got in all this, the requirements that we would typically have, how do we bring them into compliance?
I'm speaking on behalf of thirty different companies right now. Because there's a big concern. They bought their investment property.
They would have understood the I'm working at the state.
I mean, truly, it, we have
If it weren't for them, they were
So at this point in time, how we've handled it is we have not granted license until we can see where they're gonna fall and potentially
That's probably what we did tonight is we had a script of March.
After we clean up the majority of them.
Let me go see online and see if there's any
Oh, yeah. Any other in-house?
We can't figure out the speakers in here, we've got everything else on the computer.
Okay. Moving on. Kristen?
So we had a request and we had this on the last agenda, but we skimmed over it real quick, like because it was a long night. Um, so review of current planning here, both are eligible for renewal. Um, we have received a letter of interest for the LaSalle position. And we interviewed him on Monday.
You'd experience, we hold the interviews and then wait from there, just kind of following the process that's in there. It's kind of a painful process, but
I'm gonna drive.
It is what it is.
I don't know where you're going there, man.
During this review, kind of the purpose of the re- review for you and hopefully you had a chance to read the packet and the bylaws there. Oh, you, let's see, you're out, aren't you?
No. Let me drive, let me drive. Scroll faster.
So on there, I know, we started to talk at the same time. The um, if there's any changes that you would recommend that we make in the bylaws, then
They're not in this.
You could, you could take a look at, um, make an amendments to the bylaws or keep them as the same. I know the last time as we went through the bylaws on here, um, one of the things that that we kind of softened was that in the past, and typically what you see on planning commission is the expectation that they have some knowledge of construction or engineering or architecture or things that can help out, and that was softened, which is fine if we want to keep that softened where we would advertise, when we advertise for vacant positions of planning commissioners, you know, we would advertise that hey, we're, we prefer to have this type of expertise on our planning commission. But if we don't get the preference, then we will also allow just anybody, you know, with any experience to come in and join it. And so there, that was one of the things that was kind of added with the last commissioner, and so um, so it's just kind of give you some thoughts of, you know, how that flows, how you see yourselves as a planning commission operating. Um, in here, you know, we do have the, the annual training requirement. When you look at state code, it actually requires four hours of annual training to take place. And it's, and it's not necessarily like, so tonight, we anticipated having or watching Jen's video, awesome video and presentation where he presented to the commissioners, the open meetings act. Um, you have to have that training, that's a required training every year. So this is separate from that, this is state required four hours of planning training. Um, whereas in our bylaws, it just requires you to have training. And so there's things like that, that we could match up and mirror what the state's requiring in state land use code, um, which is kind of trumps what we have here at the county.
If we do use those updates from the state bills that have passed,
We would have to
would have to change it, probably a little tweaking often.
So any changes, just as a reminder, where this is in an ordinance of the county, it does go through the, the commissioners to to finalize.
So I was curious, these bylaws are in ordinance, but it says they are advisory guidelines only. So that seems to take some power out of, so what, what does that language mean?
Advisory?
Well, in our bylaws, it says, the bylaws of San Juan County Planning Commission has set forth herein, they are advisory guidelines only, does that take some kind of legal?
Where, yeah.
First page, item E?
E. Haha, you don't have to live lamb, is that what you're worried about?
Well, yes, but with so, it's just conflicting, what is, is
There's advisor, so it's advisory, we use it kind of as a guideline for staff. We would use, we would hope that you're using it as well. You know, when it comes time to, to set a chair, vice chair, board members, um, planning commissioners. Um, I really wouldn't, to me, it's advisory to me as staff to go through those and make sure that we're in compliance with the bylaws. And so that's how I interpret it, that is, it's giving you the advice of how to operate. It's also giving me the advice of how I need to make sure that we're operating the planning commission correctly.
But yet we could just disregard it.
I could disregard it, no. And I think the conflict where you're having and I would have, if I understand what you're saying is it's in an ordinance, which ordinance is law, yet the bylaws are advisory. And so you've got a law that you have to adhere to, yet it's advisory, it's not necessarily statute type, is that where the
Yeah, I'm trying to reconcile that, I just want to understand.
Just language in there, yeah.
So if it says that, but then there's a whole bunch of all these other things that say, you know, the chairperson, vice
The shells.
Chairperson shall.
Mm-hmm.
But if that's like
The shells are always, you don't get interpretation on a shell, yeah.
So the, you know, there's some state statutes that govern the rules that apply, these good people. The bylaws are written to sort of give a simple set of procedures and guidelines so that they don't have to read all this, you know, it's kind of a summary in a way. You hear of meetings where someone says, okay, we're gonna suspend the rules and just do a vote by acclamation or something, you know? And they do it so that it shortens up the meeting, but if you decide to suspend and not follow the bylaws, you still have to follow the statute. So if the bylaws, you know, maybe create a process that's simple and smooth for you, but you can still do it another way and comply with the statute, then that would be okay. But the better thing would be to just kind of consider these, you know, these are the rules we follow. If we want to deviate, we want to make sure that it's consistent with the law. If we deviate, there, there should be a good reason to deviate.
When you think of the process and the procedures for um setting a board of planning commission member, um, where in here we have this interview process that we've got to go through, like with Melissa, when she came in, she was it, she was the only candidate for the vacancy, she was the same. And so we didn't have interviews for that process, and so it was like, they're it. Just by default, because they're the only ones, and so we didn't go through an interview process and try to score them on there, it was, it would be just a waste of time. And so kind of gives us the advisory for me, gives us that flexibility to kind of break out of a norm, but yet we would follow that in most circumstances.
Okay, sounds like state statute will protect, but there is a part in article eight here that says waiving or suspending rules. A rule or perceived, a rule of procedure may be suspended or waived at any meeting by unanimous vote, so that, I guess, pertains to
Operations.
Yeah, this particular um conducting of these meetings. Well, so I just wanted clarification around that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think you kind of see that when, what I've witnessed is where somebody wants to withdraw from chair and pass the baton to vice chair um, so that the chair can host the meeting uh and continue on that item, that discussion, and so you go to the bylaws, well, there's nothing like that in here. And so it's kind of something that natural course, it's not in a Roberts Rules of Order, we haven't adopted Roberts Rules of Orders to its fullest extent. So it kind of gives you that ability to, to make those decisions, to operate. Good question, though.
I have other little notes online, but I'm not sure if we're ready to talk about other
You know, I, I would like this to be put on the next meeting since we've been inundated with reading forever. But let's, let's really pay attention to this, mark it up and, and if we see the need for changes, let's bring him.
Would it, would, is it possible and would it be worth it to just have like a little subcommittee to, to look at the bylaws, uh, and everybody could just send their feedback to the subcommittee and
I don't know if a subcommittee of planning commission
Yeah, just, you know.
Like everybody email your notes to Trent and then you could present the collective of what everybody had.
The bylaws don't allow you to do a subcommittee?
They're not in the bylaws.
Maybe we can suspend it for that.
Let's just bring it to the next meeting.
I guess, the question is, why, why are we kicking this can down the road? Is it just because nobody's ready to talk about it?
I think we've been worked over.
Already tonight?
No, I'm talking the last two months.
You have gone through a lot the last two months, absolutely. Well, and the three, so, yeah.
Go through your list, I mean, I
Yeah, these are just questions and suggestions or to put out there, but um
Melissa.
I think we, we already did the electing of the chairperson and vice chair, have, did we do that?
Yeah.
Earlier on. Um, I don't have a lot, but um
There's your hotel.
The agendas. I guess I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't something we might want to look at as far as do we, are we okay with having three days prior to the meeting being enough adequate time? And is
Is that stated in the bylaws, that's a good one.
Yeah, that's in article four.
So, well, we try and it's, we've been, it's been hard to get there.
Like, how long does it count?
Settle down, we try to get it the Friday before the meeting, so then you would have Friday through, essentially Thursday. You know, so almost a full week to sort of view the documents, it's been a struggle for us to get there right now.
Right, and so do we need to change it so that it is easier for staff to meet?
I think it's three days.
Three days is okay.
Time frame, keep in there.
When do we get it this time? Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. The law just requires us to get the agenda and information to the public within twenty-four hours, however, you as planning commissioners, there's that you have to have that three day at the bare minimum, I think, for you to at least get the packet, go through the packet, because like last planning commission, you know, seven hundred pages in one item. And, you know, you get it just a couple of days before, that's, it's just not a lot to go through things, and so the earlier that we can get them to you, the better for, for us, you know, so that you come to planning commission and you've read through the, the material, that's our expectation, that's why we do the staff reports now is, you know, if at all, you know, if you can't read all the documents in the planning packet, at least our hopes is that you've gone through the staff report, we try to to give it to you, give you recommendations on motions to make, conditional uses, conditions that can be in there. So at least bare minimum, the expectation is that you've gone through the staff reports, you've read that um, and tried to get through the material and the content. But there will be those planning commission meetings that are stacked with items that it can be difficult, I've been in your shoes, where trying to get through that entirety of the packet is pretty hard. And then like you, I mean, some of you do the same thing, is you also research it and you're pulling in other sources, other information uh to help you make the decision, which is totally fine and appropriate. Um, when you get into those meetings where we can have the site tours and go out on site, we may not, may have to start meeting early and you know, go out on location, which is hard to do here, just because, I mean, to get Spanish Valley here, forty minutes from here and forty back, and then to have a meeting, and so makes it a little bit more difficult, but the expectation is that you've read the documents and so on us, on our side of it, to get the documents to you in advance, so that if you're in those areas, you can go do your own site tour, do your own exploration before you come to the meeting.
Hmm.
So I think three days is a pretty tight window, especially knowing, you know, some of you full-time jobs, you're always working, you're just as busy as everybody else with families and things like that. We hope to get it out earlier.
Friday is always our goal.
Yeah, because on the next item, it says that it'll have the proposed agenda items and meeting materials by twelve P M. the Friday before. The very following one.
But and who's proposing that, is that like applicants?
So the proposal would go to the chair, so, and this works the same way in commission meetings, is there's an opportunity in there that if, if there's agenda items that need to be added, that I could work with the chair of the commission, the board of commissioners, and either add items or take all i- items off, and so there's sometimes a discussion with the, with the chairs that, hey, are you okay to have this item on there, or do you want me to hold it, move it to the next month? Or put it on there, or we'll all receive requests from the commissioners, hey, will you add this item on there, but Friday is my cutoff. You know, because that's where we try to send out the packets is Friday. If you're giving it to me Friday at five o'clock, it may not make it to, to those packets. And so it's kind of operational, how the staff would work that type of thing.
And also with the public, like I had one come in Friday afternoon, you're like, hey, we'll hustle it. Because otherwise they have to wait a whole month.
Because I know that was something that I think Scott struggled with too, there would be people, um
You're working it over the weekend.
Right, and waiting on some, the public, whoever the applicant was, to get something
Yeah.
And maybe we just need to do a better job of, sorry, we'll kick it to next month. Or you haven't paid yet, you haven't, we'll kick it to next month.
Well, if at all possible, why not see it, I mean, I mean, you just play it month to month, I mean, doesn't have, I mean, you know what I'm saying, is if you get it on Monday, they pay, why can't we see them, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's how we are paying right now.
No, I'm just saying, I
But at some point, we do need that cutoff and um there have been a few messes in the past where we heard things, but they never paid. So that's why we need, we need it, we need that application full and complete when it gets stuck on the agenda, because as you can see with some of the issues we're dealing with, if, let's say they did the application, but they never paid.
Well, but we've had a few too, that they come here for whatever reasons, we're like, well, let's table it, you know what I'm saying, and so it Yep. The process gets
Yeah, so we need to stick, we really do need to stick to like full, complete application.
Right, there's liability for the county if we don't
If we try to help people out in good faith,
By concern.
It can bite us.
We've done a lot of that in the past.
We're still trying.
And we're still finding
Still biting us.
They go for, and part of it is like, well, I've been to planning commission, I have their approval and, or it was tabled, I went to planning commission, it was tabled, so therefore I'm gonna go ahead and begin. So there is that anticipation, well, everybody shook their head yes, even though it was tabled. And so that means I can go, and so we just need to be careful with kind of that process and make sure that it's as complete as we can get it. There are questions about payments that may have been made or haven't been made yet. Yet they have their conditional use approval and they're off and running. You know, yet as we try to find those payments, we're like, oh, where did they code them, where did we put them in staff, and so we're trying to fix our systems internally at the same time to make sure that everything's done. If you come in for a subdivision, you have a preliminary plat fee and then you had a final plat fee, well, some paid preliminary or some just paid final, and so it's trying to streamline all of this.
We never used to pay for them at all.
So if you see our new fees, our new fee schedule is out there, and some people are gonna be a little bit more surprised, especially in the planning, marine, and planning and zoning, there's a little bit more costs that are in there um with our, with our fee schedule.
And that was us getting with the times. We, we did comparables with all of our surrounding counties and averaged them out, and that's what we pr- we pitched for our new fee schedule.
Or somebody's salary was set too high in the beginning.
Well, we were way low, I mean, there were things, other counties were charging five hundred bucks for them, we're charging ten dollars. Yeah, and it's we're, we're not using it, Max said this earlier, we're not using this as a revenue source, we're using this as a
Time spent.
Yeah, I, it takes a lot of effort
Yeah.
to push a lot of this through, and that's not just our planning department, on subdivisions, it's everybody.
Well, and it goes with like your building department too, that's why they do plan reviews, because if you don't, a lot, the people you spring prints in for plan reviews and then all that time wasted and they never come back, well,
Right.
they can pay for the plan review, they're gonna either come back or
And so that was another thing is making sure that people are serious, because we get a lot of rolling it around.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's a lot of our day.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you're not seriously thinking about a maybe, then
A definite maybe.
Definite maybe. And did you see anything else on the bylaws?
In article five, they talk about conflict of interest and ex parte communication, and I'm wondering, is, is that something that we should add to our weekly agenda as allowing um time for any disclosures?
Like what the commission does?
Yeah, like what the commission does.
We could, yeah, it certainly makes sense. Then you just, so, yeah, we, I think it I think it'd be well worth the time spent just having that clarity right up front in the meeting, and we can place it as, you know, similar, you notice on this one, we've got the pledge of allegiance, it's listed there. We can definitely put it under, under that after your roll call, so that if there are any agenda items, you can declare conflict of interest. I think it'd be helpful for the public, because there's oftentimes confusion. Um, and we've seen it here be, in the past, like, for example, Lloyd, well, it's a good case for this, is Lloyd is also a developer and he has interest in that, he has an interest with his business. Also has interest with special service district. And the per- the cool thing about conflict of interests is if you declare it right up front, you just say, hey, just so your work, here's my conflict with this agenda item. Once you declare, that doesn't mean you don't have to vote, it's kind of up to you whether or not you feel that that is a high enough, like, and I touched this too close, so I'm not gonna vote on it. But really, there's nothing to say that you can't. And so once you declare and you state that, hey, I've got a conflict of interest, I'm making sure everybody's aware, the public's aware, then you can continue to proceed in that, in that business, and so that agenda item.
Well, this actually says, though, you have to recuse yourself.
On the bylaw, and so we've got to fix that, because law is opposite.
Yeah, that's what I thought, all you have to do is declare.
Yep.
Okay. Does that mean, that, that sentence needs to be struck?
Except if you are, if you are owner.
Owner, part owner, but you can still declare that, according to kind of the advice that we've received, even on the commission side. If you're owner, you declare it, and everybody's okay with it.
Because see, we've always played the game, like if there weren't enough people here, um, without my vote, we didn't have a quorum, so my stuff has been pushed off many times, because we've always
Really?
we've always went off the back that it was, I could not vote on my own project.
Yeah, and I don't know, if, if you got a monetary stake in the project, I
We can keep it in there. You can always go above and beyond the law. Every minimum.
You know, I, I think, I think when, I mean, like doing projects and stuff for other people that are developing, um, I, declaring that, that, yeah, I have an interest in this, because I'm gonna make Um, I declaring that, that, yeah, I have an interest in this because I'm gonna make money off this project, but I think when it comes to. Me stand right there at that podium and saying, this is my project, I have a hundred percent. I wanna vote yes on this, but I, I think that's, I think, I, we need to kind of stick with the idea.
Keep it in there and be harder than the law on there, um, I mean, if you think and you applied that to the state legislators. That's, that's why it's kind of a little bit soft on the law. A little bit more allowable for you to continue to operate and vote and they leave it up to the individual to. To make that call, but if you want, we can keep it in there, I, I think it protects you as well.
Yeah, cuz that's how we've done it in the past, I've declared all the projects I'm involved in. Um, but everything that I've ever presented myself, I do not make a vote on.
Also anyway, the, adding those agenda items, I think would be good, um, effort towards transparency and communicate, yeah. And it doesn't, so I'm, so there one, Article Seven, per diem and travel expenses. Commission members are to receive a per diem, I'm wondering how much is that per diem? We know the travel expenses.
We send you to training, then that state required four hours, um, if we send you to training, you're like mo- mostly. We like the chair, vice chair that we would send, but if there are opportunities that we can. Think, can get you out to those, then we'll try, and that's where we've got.
Per diem comes in, otherwise, we're just getting travel.
And we have that on the, on our administrative side of what those per diem totals are for travel.
I think that was it.
Oh, okay, I, I just have a question for clarification on, um, Article Five, number four. So, um, so you're not supposed to talk about stuff before it's brought before. Or say anything negative about an item before it's brought before the commission. Uh, but this says, it can, um. Where is that? It's about, it says you can't do it. Where did I see that? Oh, maintain public impartiality, sorry, I'm on the wrong one, uh, Article Fi- Article Five, uh, section five. It, okay, so we have an ethical duty not to make public statements. Before the commission hearing is concluded, so is everything that's on the agenda a hearing, like we're gonna hear about hip hop camp? Right? Is this a hearing on hip hop camp or is this, what is a hearing? Is it?
That's public hearing.
Does this mean?
I think a public hearing is a public hearing.
Yeah, and these are not hearings, these are recommendations.
Commission hearing, it's the commission meeting.
Yeah, these are, are recommendations to you.
Yeah, recommendations would be a better word.
Yeah, so I think that word needs to be changed.
And I think that's actually just pinpointing public hearings, not like our agenda items.
Well, so then, is it, so is this about public hearings or is this about anything on the agenda?
I think it's public hearings.
Yeah, that's what I read.
Then so I think the word public ought to be put in there.
Okay, either take hearing out or add public. So, when you look at the Open Meetings Act. And we went through a lot of discussion this last year, um, with the state legislature, if you ever wanted to. To read some interesting minutes about San Juan County effect. There was a lot of discussion about what happened in San Juan County with previous commissioners. And changes that state legislators wanted to make to the Open Meetings Act. To avoid the San Juan County. And so, that effect, and so as they went through kind of the, the discussions, changes in the. The state legislature, a lot of counties outside of us fought it, they're like, the Open Meetings Act is fine. You know, and these were attorneys, county attorneys were like, what they did was illegal and they need to be prosecuted, cuz it was illegal. Well, the state. Adj- general was like, you know, it's kind of confusing. And it wasn't really well defined of what a meeting is, and. County attorneys were like, a meeting is a meeting, it's a meeting. If you have more than a quorum or a quorum in a meeting, that's illegal. We shouldn't have to change the Open Meetings Act to define well what a meeting is. And a lot of commissioners were concerned because the commissioners here and other counties, the, a body of three. Also have, not only do they have the legislative hat that they wear, but they also wear the executive hat. And so with the executive hat, that means they're running the county technically, especially if you don't have a county administrator. They're it, and so sometimes two commissioners that make up a quorum have to meet to make executive decisions. And so, is that a meeting? Should that be publicly noticed? And then the commissioners are like, well, if that has to be publicly noticed, now you just tied our hands in running a county. And so there was a lot of deliberation on, hey, you're, by the changes that they were proposing, you know, gen- general and that. Subcommittee that we set on, like by changing this, you're making it hard for commissioners to do their job on the executive side of it. And so with that, when some of the concern was this maintain partial, public impartiality. In those discussions is you as planning commissioners should be able to call up one another. And say, hey, what have we done here in the past? I mean. Lloyd is a lot of that, he's like, he has that institute tran- as well. I mean, they have this institutional laws, well, this is, this is why we got to where we are now today and this is why we do things. So you should have that ability to call one another, and so when I look at that, that's, that's speaking to that. You have the ability to call one another and, and ask, you know, and ask questions and have this discussed, but you can't. Formulate a decision and say, well, I'm voting no here, will you vote no with me? You can't do that, you can have a discussion. And, and so for me, that was it, and a lot of commissioners, I mean, Commissioner Stubbs was there, well, she's like, hey, that. I'm new here, Commissioner Adams has been here sixteen years. Should be able to have a discussion, well, what have we done in the past here, or tell me a little bit more about Spanish Valley and. And why is there, you know, this thing here and why did the county buy land in there and how did the clinic get there? You should be able as a new commissioner, have this discussion, even though you're two. You know, as long as it doesn't formulate a decision and you're not sitting there together saying, okay, let's vote no. Then, then you're fine, you can have this discussion, um, so that's kind of what, how I read into that.
And I think public hearing is the wrong word.
What did the state do there? Because I would kind of disagree with you. I don't know, so to me, I've got a little bit of the law, we lost interest once, once the San Juan County effect wasn't affected. And that, there was a serious, a lot of debate and discussions with county attorneys. Our insurance company is, was also with it trying to figure out, well, then what do we do? And a lot of county attorneys were like, let's do nothing, let's just follow the law and adhere to the law and enforce the law. So I'll have to look. I can see how that is a problem though. I mean, just because you say, well, we can have a discussion, but we can only discuss. In general terms. We can't formulate a decision. But on the same hand, those aren't public, those aren't recorded, those. In every way, shape and form is a meeting of the minds that sit on a commission. Maybe not as a cor- like, doesn't have a quorum, but. To the quorum. Well, like in a larger. I just, I'm just saying, I can see how there is, there is inherent problems in doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than everybody getting it all at once and this is our open.
And then my other, I guess I kind of disagree a little too, I think this is a public hearing. I just don't think it's, maybe we have disclosed item, agenda items. But everything on the agenda, you can make comments about, we made comments about it. For then the public is made aware of the meeting, so it, every planning and zoning meeting is. A formal public hearing, formal public hearing also requires county staff to notice. It as that item as a public hearing, also requires us to notify property owners. Um, surrounding that there is a public hearing that the planning commission will hear this specific item, so. It ramps it up to a little bit higher notification than just our regular transparent agenda. All of our meetings are always open to the public, but technically you do not have to take. For those agenda items.
So I, I think we should have it say before the commission discussion is concluded. Just to get rid of the ambiguity of what the state recognizes as a public hearing. As Max said, I mean, that, we gotta post it ten days out and in the newspaper and duh, 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 duh.
Is it commission discussion or is it just commission meeting?
Unimpartiality.
Yeah, for against the merits of any application before the commission meeting is concluded.
I have a question, so in B five, you're talking about it, because there's two components. It's the public hearing part, and then is the ethical part. So are we talking about the top, just the top part?
It's the bottom sentence.
The bottom, you know, like, um. As the commissioners, you know, we all have people, when you go to the grocery store, everybody touch you about one side or the other. And we can listen, but for us, I feel, I like that part they have there because it's unethical. Because I may be in one of those camps, but I cannot make comment. Because the law say who has the right is the property owner, if the property owner comes through your. Commission and you guys approve and they come to us, I cannot, I think, what my cousin said or what he told me to do. And I think the B five has two parts, the part, the part of, was a public meeting. And then what's an ethical part of us as we're working through something as the commissioners. They need to publicly fix side. Am I correct to understand that that's what the.
That's a really good point, it, it, it's almost like five ought to be split into two parts. One is, um, you know, one is intra-communication, yeah. That's a good point.
Yeah, I can see kind of what you're saying, the, I think the whole purpose of this paragraph, the way that I look at it. So maintain public impartiality, have you ever noticed or read in the paper where like a city council member will come out with a position? Before the meeting even takes place, that's kind of how I see this is. It is describing in here that you can talk amongst yourself, you can talk to our county attorney, you can talk to staff. But what you can't do is take it further than that and say, hey, I'm going into planning commission. Newspaper calls you and, hey, what's your position on this agenda item, would like to do an article on it. And you give that position before the commission meeting is concluded. And a decision is, and recommendation has been rendered, so this is allowing you to have the discussion beforehand with each other and us. But not to go out and say, and grandstand and with media or anything else before an actual decision is made. In here as a body, and so you don't throw your own positions out there, well, I'm against this. You know, let everybody know right from the beginning, I'm against it, it's like, hold that till you have the actual planning commission. So in its entirety for this whole entire paragraph, that's, you're neutral until you actually have the planning commission meeting.
It's kind of disrespect to the intent of a planning commission to make a decision before you. Hurt all the evidence in the meeting and hurt all of your peers, I think you've got all you need to make your decision, then you come to the meeting. Maybe Anne brings up something you didn't know about, you know, which might cause you to change your mind, so. This is really about respecting the, the concept of the planning commission and your peers by saying, I, I don't. You know, if you come out beforehand, you're saying, I know better than the group and I'm smarter than the group, so I don't even need to hear what they have to say. If that's what you don't want, public to see. The wrong attitude.
So you could take off that first section, I think it's still appropriate because you, I mean. You should have that ability to, as, if we get to pack it out on Friday and Monday, you've read it over the weekend. Calling staff and saying, what is, what does this mean, you know, I'd like further information, you know. What's going on behind the scenes or do you have further information about this, or do you have a history about this and. Without saying, hey, I'm gonna vote no against you.
I don't know that I would take it out, I, you know, if anything, I would create it as a separate. Separate section. No, I'm not talking about removing it at all, because I think it's very helpful for us to know that it's okay to talk to each other. And talk to you and. I think that's, that's very helpful. Yeah, have, you know, just make it two, two separate items. Just, yeah, the, the second sentence could be maintain public impartiality. And the first sentence could be something like, you know, communi- communication among commission members or something like that. A communication on staff and commission, something like that.
I mean, I've had, I've been in those situations literally where I send a staff report in and, you know, I, I was told. By a mayor, I won't tell you where, but he's like, yeah, Mac, you need to change your staff report. And you need to switch this item and I'm like. Alright, let me see what I can do, let me talk to, to the director and see what he's thinking, and I told the director, I'm like, I'm not gonna change my opinion. It's like, I can't, uh, this is how I feel and this is about a loan for a friend on Main Street. Million dollars and I'm like, he's declared bankrupt, I have an issue with it, I wouldn't loan him the money personally and so. But the mayor's buddy, coming up on election year, it's like, Mac, you need to change your position on it. And with that, it pushed it to the director and the director, um. I'm like, you're gonna have to present this if you wanna change it, you're beholden to the mayor, I'm beholden to you, no, I can't get fired for this, but. If you wanna take it out, you can, so the director did, but for me, that was kind of where. He, the mayor already had his position made up and his mind was made up and this is how he was gonna vote, this is how he wanted it to go. And so this, that partial, that public impartiality staff, um, as well, kind of goes together in my head. Uh, of, you know, don't come to us with your decisions made up before you actually set as a body. Cuz it, it puts staff in this peculiar predicament of trying to, to balance it, which we on our side of it. Completely try to present a staff report that's, it's impartial to where you can go both ways, we give our recommendations. With anticipation that you're gonna deliberate, interpret and, and formulate decisions on your own. Using the information that we can give you as much as we can.
Okay, any other?
Run spell checks, statutes is spelled statues a few times.
Ooh, that's good.
Alex.
Instead of state statues?
Yeah, instead of state statues, they would, you know.
That's awesome.
Sir, Commissioner Wilson.
He's gonna live that up the rest.
I actually wanted to be pulled that from here on out.
No promises.
Okay, item number three.
Can we do the training?
No, so we were gonna.
We're gonna have to bump.
We were gonna rebroadcast Jen's, unless, Jen's, I hate to put you on the spot, can you remember what you said? I don't know if you wanna go over rope is literally, so my intentions were to show, um, Jen's. Training that he provided to the commission, we can get to that next time when we have.
Tech.
Surround sound. So without it. It wouldn't it wouldn't be worthwhile. We'll get it next.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
No, it's not an action.
Oh, right, right.
Okay, item number four.
So we have consideration and approval of a conditional use application for a hip camp, not a hip hop camp, although maybe it's hippity hoppity out there. To be located near Looking Glass Rock for Where the Wild Things Camp um by Stephen Alba, who is here. Um, so you have two recommendations with this, make a motion approving the conditional use. With findings and conditions with substantial evidence or make a motion denying the conditional use based on findings and facts. Um, with substantial evidence. Um, we have some recommended conditions there for you. Uh, but you are welcome to make up your own as well. The county has received a conditional use application from Stephen Alba for a hip camp. To be located on the property owned and endorsed by J. Lowry Red of La Salle Livestock Limited near Looking Glass Rock. There's parcel number. The primitive camping resort includes sixteen campsites, four parking areas and two bathrooms. Existing roads will be used and each campsite will be cleared of surrounding brush. And provided a fire ring creating little to no impact to the surrounding environment. Guests will be informed prior to arrival of importance of protecting and preserving the surrounding crypto soil. And other natural features including wildlife, trees, vegetation, habitat areas and cultural resources. Uh, this property is located within the Ag One Zone with access from Highway one ninety-one and Looking Glass Road. Under the Agricultural Use District, a private park or recreational grounds or private recreational camp or resort. Including accessory or supporting dwellings or dwelling complexes and commercial services uses. Which are owned by or managed by the recreational facility to which it is accessory are permitted as a conditional use. By definition, a conditional use is a land use that because of its unique characteristics or potential impact on the county. Surrounding neighbors or adjacent land uses may not be compatible in some areas or may be compatible only if certain conditions are required. That mitigate or eliminate the detrimental impacts. In authorizing any conditional use, the planning commission shall impose such requirements and conditions. As are necessary for the protection of adjacent properties and the public welfare. The planning commission shall not authorize a conditional use permit unless the evidence presented is such to establish. That such use will not under any, under the circumstances of a particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety or general welfare. Um, of a person residing or working in the vicinity or interest to property or improvements in the vicinity. And that the purpose, the proposed use will comply with intense spirit regulations and conditions. Specified in this ordinance for which use in zoning district where the use is to be located as well as. Make the use harmonious with the neighboring uses in the zoning district. And the planning commission shall itemize, describe or justify the conditions imposed on the use. So possible conditions we have to consider. Oh. Here's your map.
How close is it to the last one?
Yeah, I can't, I can't figure out where this is.
Straight out of the. I mean, probably two hundred yards straight south of.
Yeah, so I don't know if you can see my mouse, but the the highway is up. The highway is up over to the east. So the. Yes, it is somewhat by the turtle, if you know what the turtle is.
I pulled it up on Google Maps.
It is, how many miles would you say off the, you can, you can come on up. How many miles off the highway is it on the turtle?
Miles to the turnoff and another uh half a mile to the camp.
Yeah, it is not very.
I didn't hear that.
It's a mile and a half off the highway and then another half mile to the camp, so it is. Uh, pretty accessible via highway. Um, and you can see your conditions there. We'll have you read them off in your motion. I don't wanna beat it to death.
What is a hip camp?
Hip camp is um, so are you familiar with Airbnb? Airbnb, uh, they rent out, you know, if you have a room in your house and this hip camp is an app similar to that that rents out if you have property. That people can pitch a tent on, so it's just primitive camping for um, and then basically I reach people through the app, which is hip camp and so so far.
So hip camp is the app?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a a platform similar to Airbnb, but before uh primitive camp or tent camping, I guess.
You said you were gonna have four restrooms or those can be porta potties?
Uh, yeah, right now they're porta potties and, you know. Uh, depending on, you know, hopefully I hope would like to do septic and and get it all, but right now I have porta potties out there.
And it's two.
It's two, yeah.
Four parking spaces and two two restrooms.
Maybe you said four.
Four parking areas, maybe.
For parking areas. I don't know what I said.
So this is in in the works right now. I'm just trying to get it approved.
Cattlemen, the races.
Probably.
Those areas.
Yeah, it's Lowry.
Huh?
It's Lowry, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lowry's name's on it.
Yeah.
Did they have any? Any control or any any say or?
They're probably just leasing it.
Yeah, I work for him and uh so leased to own, leased leasing it right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I work for him. He's a friend of mine.
Leasing it from Lowry. Oh, okay, alright.
And I I work for him. We work together.
So you come through the sitlo land?
Yeah, the easement, uh huh, right now.
Go ahead. Before we wrap up, we do have one public comment at least for.
Do you wanna come on up?
Yeah, sure.
I think most of you know me, but for the record and for those who are online, uh, my name is Brian Torgerson. I work with the City of Utah School and Institute of Trust Lands. And we have property right next door and with me uh online is Jamie Schmidt, who works for Under Canvas. Uh, can you, can we hear her by chance or? Okay.
Hi, everyone.
We were going to contact in this presentation, but it looks like it's just on me, so. Um, but uh. Just to kind of bring you back a little bit, we were trying to get you guys on a on a field trip out in this area last fall before Under Canvas shut down. And the main reason is that is is we uh us and Under Canvas has created a really a destination out there. I don't know if you've been out there, but it has been featured in many travel magazines. It's getting a lot of notoriety. Um, they've invested millions of dollars and and it's it's a really nice project. They're up for a lot of other awards this year, which um I think you'll be surprised and they'll probably end up with a lot of them. It's a first class class facility in the heart of San Juan County. Um, our main concern is we don't, we don't have a problem with with NIMBYism. We we're fine with it. We just want it to be done to a certain level and I think that's. Um, kind of stated in the code that it has to be harmonious with the nearby property owners and. If if they're just looking to kind of do what they've done before, it's it's kind of slightly, it's um just thrown in some trailers and they've been. Operating under these apps with no real approval so far. And if they're looking to continue the same thing, I. I I wouldn't think that that's harmonious at all at this point in time. Um, some of the things we also uh been kind of working with Under Canvas is there's. A few, Under Canvas went through this exact same process for their project right right next door and there was a few things that we thought that there were. Um, deficiencies in their applications and I'm just gonna go through those uh for Jamie, if that's okay.
Can you guys, did you guys hear me at all?
The questions we have, will they be a host onsite twenty-four hours a day? And the security and emergency services, how are they gonna be handled? Is this a seasonal operation, you know, that wasn't in there? And if their toilets, we talked a little about about that, are they portable and and will they be, how often will they be pumped, you know? That could be a problem um for the neighbors. Um, and uh if the permanent uh, if the toilets are permanents or stick built. Is there a building uh permit and a wastewater permit? And how many people will be allowed per site? How many cars and trailers are allowed per site? Is there enough parking and does it meet code requirements? Is there enough um, is another site for a camp host, cause it just is a total of sixteen? Is there a power to the site or what are they trying to do with power? And I don't think that was really addressed. And where's that power located? Are the structures on the site permanent? Cause there's some shipping containers and a bunch of other things out there. And we wanna know kind of, you know, if that's gonna stay or if it's gonna be something else. Um, another question is how's the trash um waste gonna be managed and are there containers? Uh, where they're gonna be located, how are they gonna be emptied um and stuff like that? Does their access road cross over the underground uh gas pipelines? Uh, Under Canvas had to get certain approval from the pipeline company uh for the additional traffic and and they should have to do the same. Um, is there signage and do they have permits from the BLM for those signs and? Is there water on site and what are they planning on doing for uh water? Is it gonna be a public water source? Um, so we have a, you know, a lot of questions for about their application. Once again, we don't have a problem with the neighbor doing something on the property. We just wanna make sure that it is harmonious. And that it's uh built to a certain standard. Um, we understand it's not gonna probably be built to the to this, the high level standard that Under Canvas is, cause that's why we wanted to get you out there to really showcase that. Show you what we have going on there. It's really exceptional, but we do wanna make sure that it is harmonious and and done in the right way. And right now, we don't think that the application is quite sufficient um from what Under Canvas had to do. And I think it'd be good to keep everyone consistent on the same page of what they had to, what they had to do. Um, so what we'd like to see is maybe let's get the field trip, get you guys out there to see everything, see the property. And then they could work on their application about more and and then we can reconvene on this, but that's just our opinion and appreciate your time and and uh consideration. Thank you.
Hey, Brian. So I'm speculating that.
Pardon?
I'm speculating that this is already existing and it was. And that's why it's being brought here, that the this one that's up for a conditional use, it's already existing.
They've been operating, yeah, they've been operating and they've been having overnight camping going on there and. In my opinion, that's, you know, illegal without getting proper permits and I think they're just trying to do. If they're looking to do something new, I I think that would be great. Um, we would encourage that. Uh, we would just like to see a bit more information in their application. And we would like to see the planning commission go and see what's going out there too, so we can make sure that whatever's happening out there is harmonious and 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 what's going on there. But yes, that's a good question. Thank you.
Is is the Under Canvas um facility on this map somewhere and just not visible? Where is it in relation to this?
It's a little bit north.
Yeah.
It's a little bit. Like how far away on paper?
It's it's probably.
I had a friend do that.
Not even that.
If you look at this, it's it's at this rock.
Yes, Under Canvas is.
It is on the map.
But but it's not showing the development. That's an old map.
Okay, so it is, so it is.
So up here. Uh, I believe Shay was saying this is, this is. Looking glass, so that rock is looking glass. People go climb, but then Under Canvas is is over here.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, that's not showing the cameras.
And and one thing that we would like to see in the conditional use permit is maybe some sort of screening or something. Um, depending on what they're wanting to do, um, that that might be beneficial. Just depending on what they do there and we don't know exactly, so. A lot of things are unclear to us um from this application.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Regarding the easement, the permission to cross over the under underground, was it a pipeline use?
Yeah.
Gas line.
Who required that? Was that the county or was that the, how did that require?
Gas, gas company.
The gas company?
Yeah. And that was for, that was for public safety reasons. They had to, essentially Under Canvas had to build up the road, the roadway. To an extent to make sure that it, the the gas line was protected. And that's.
Know about the the.
Pardon me?
How did they know about your development at all?
Um, I think we we contacted, reached out and, you know, things like that. Pardon me?
Is settler requirement?
No, I don't think it was a settler requirement. I think they did a lot of due diligence to understand what was going on there and I think they.
So just to avoid any potential problems, you said, hey, why don't we just get them?
Yeah.
Okay, I just curious when you said that, I just wondered who.
And that, that's probably a better question for Under Canvas and unfortunately we can't hear them, but uh we can get back to you on those questions and email them to the to the group. On what happened there, cause I could be telling you wrong.
They can call into the meeting.
Hello, I'm on the call.
Well, you know, in certain areas, you have to get an access with the division, uh, with UDOT, you know, in certain projects. I just wondered how. How this requirement came about.
And and also Under Canvas had to look at the road, make sure that the road conditions were adequate for. Cause right now it's just a two-track road out there. They had to make sure that the road was upgraded and and improved to a certain standard to make sure they could handle all the traffic. In and out of there.
That was one of our conditional uses on that one, no?
Hmm, yeah.
I think it was.
Oh, yeah, gorgeous.
But but once again, we don't have a problem with them developing out there. We just wanna make sure that it's it's harmonious with what we have going on there. Cause it is a first-class facility. It really is. It's a gem for the county. And um it's gonna bring in lots of revenue for the county in TRT tax. Uh, sitlo hopes to make some money off of this as well, which which I'm sure we will and and we'd just like to see it all kind of continuing. And and move forward, so.
Can I just get, I know you already went through your list of concerns, but the road and the gas line um is.
We don't go over the gas line, just so you know.
What were the other ones? Trash?
Yeah. We.
Potentially be covered under the conditionally.
In the space within the motion.
Yeah, I went through that quite fast, um, but but trash is one, um, really public water, public sewer, what what they're doing with that. Um, not that this providing porta potties, but um we've had porta potties on trust lands and other areas and if you don't service those regularly. It's it's a problem. And so it would be nice to not just say we're providing this, but to have a schedule of maintenance and and more information. To make sure that there's the health and safety of the people visiting this area are gonna, gonna be, you know, it's gonna be good for everyone.
My my comment would be though, but how do we, it comes back to policing, so. We don't know how many people are there, how often they're there, you know, like, so if they hire. Such and such company and they're on a weekly pump schedule, they need it to be more than they can do it. Twice a week. I don't think that needs to be necessarily a condition that we need to to. Put in your schedule because we don't know capacity or how many people are there, but we also. I mean.
It'd come down to how we say it and the condition.
I mean, it it kind of comes down to that general, do you comply with, you know, Utah County, I mean, uh, Utah Health District guidelines, I mean. It just, it's always about staff and putting these things in, you know, trash pickup.
And I think we can figure all that out, but there's not a lot of information about that right now and it would be nice to have more information about that.
Yeah, but do we have information on Under Canvas, what they do with their trash, planning and zoning?
Yeah, I mean, we can and we can definitely get it for you. Under Canvas, they handle, Andy's here, you can probably tell you what they do with their trash, but you're wanting to know if it's in the permit.
Under Canvas is a first-rate facility.
Sure.
Everything I've seen, right? But I also feel like. They're. They're able to do something with that land as well and you wanted to. To maybe be a little more first-class.
So I wanted.
Saying, I don't, I don't know how we necessarily that harmonious, well. It went from nothing to Under Canvas and Under Canvas is five-star. And so now you wanna say two-star, is it harmonious with our five-star, even though five-star, there was just dirt there before.
Right. And 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 I can appreciate that comment and that's why I kind of said, we, we don't, we understand that this isn't gonna be to the same level. And that that's gonna be a balancing act that we have here, what that harmonious level is, and I think we can get that if we get more information and. And have more communication on this. I just think for, if we're just approving what's going on there right now, it's a long shot for for being harmonious at all. But I think we could, we could get there with more information. And um, that's just, you know, our opinion. We're just here to protect our Lassies and and our land and our property rights as well, but. But we, I did say that I wanna reconvey. I understand that they're not gonna build to the same level and we're not expecting that. Cause this is a first-class facility and and, but at the same time. Because this is a first-class facility and, and, but at the same time, we need to, you know, make sure it's done in a, in a, in a good way.
Can, can anyone hear me?
Staff, if I could. So if you think, let's use under Canvas for an example. So there's the TRT tax, correct? But for most overnight accommodations, like an Airbnb or small cabins, or there's also a property tax assessment. So what kind of an assessment process is done for a, a tent? Either one, a can, like under Canvas, that the tents are there.
So for anything.
But there is facilities that stay.
Sure. So your standard Airbnb, just Airbnb outside. So we do assess the, the structure as a commercial space. So it is now no longer a primary residence, which has a lower tax rate. It is now a commercial space. So this land, this parcel would be assessed as a commercial space. And also, we assess personal property. So anything within an overnight rental, TVs, couches, fridges, stoves, towels, sheets, beds, all of that will be taxed as commercial personal property. So in this case, all of that inventory, and this is something that we're working on after July first. We're hoping to have a checklist for these types of commercial endeavors, where they have to provide us an inventory of their personal property that is being used as commercial. And, and it will be, will tax against that.
So question, how many acres is this piece?
The entire block is just under.
Just under a hundred? So. But it, but it, without it being.
Green space, is that what you're thinking?
Now, we've got five years of green belt, of payback taxes in the commercial, because it's not subdivided. So you are gonna make the whole hundred acres commercial and tax it as a hundred acres of commercial land?
Because I believe in order, I believe, I'll have to talk with the assessor's office. But I believe in order to get a, and maybe Jen's can weigh in on this, in order to get a green belt designation, there's a five-acre minimum that they, that they say is for your house and your garage and your driveway and blah, blah, blah. So let's say you have a hundred acres, they would take five acres out of that and put it into green. Five acres would be the residential lot, and then ninety-five acres would be green belt.
But you, you can pull one acre.
Yeah, my place is one acre.
Depends on your, your zoning, but you can have one parcel with a part green belt and the other, which is what you said. So, so you can, you can cross.
And, and that does not have to be a, a hard property line.
Right.
You don't have to subdivide it out. So I, this is a unique case where there isn't a dwelling on it. I'm not sure how that would be treated with the assessor's office, quite honestly.
It would have to be treated just like an RV park. I mean, it would have to be.
Five-year rollback.
Five-year rollback.
But I'm not sure. I mean, if they're still running cattle on.
Doesn't matter.
Ninety-five acres.
You've got to, you've got to have that combined. Ninety-nine acres of it.
Yeah.
You know. If you've got a commercial enterprise there in a certain spot. It seems to me you're going to have to have analysis that takes some portion of that agreement and moves the rest.
Yes, yes.
I don't know what happened with you.
They don't pay taxes.
Yeah, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure exactly how that would go with the assessors.
If I was to build a house on, because they have five acres or ten acres, and I build a house in, on my green belt area, they actually pulled that out of the green belt.
Correct.
They would have to on a commercial park.
Correct. But how much they pull, and if the whole thing is now commercial, I don't know.
It was just a question, sorry.
He's not, is he leasing the whole hundred acres?
No.
No. Not that that makes a big difference, but.
Do you have any follow-up you want to say, or any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the bathrooms go, it's a campground, we, we, you know, we, like, like they probably would do. I mean, except for I also have a comment about that, because their septic system, I drive right over the leach field in the summer. I can smell it. It's awful, my whole, everybody can smell it that comes to visit, friends. So my bathrooms don't ever smell like that. I get, and the good reviews I have had, because I have operated, I didn't know, you know, for a little while without knowing all the, I am new to all this, and, and so, yeah, we started, and then the city reached out and let me know. And said, as long as I was in the process, it was okay. And I've, I've taken a little bit longer than I wanted to on the process, but I, I stopped. It is seasonal, and I did stop until we got this, you know, going. So as far as that goes, I'm trying to be by the book. I'm not trying to dodge anything. And a lot of the structures and those materials that's out there was already, was on the settler land where we leased for our cattle. We had to move it. We had to move the semi-trailer. We had to move a bunch of stuff over and get it out of their way, so. And then, so yeah, that's, the ranch material and stuff is different from the campground and from what I'm trying to do. Just want to say that. I'm not proud of the, the mess, the way it looks. I apologize, you know. I do very much so intend to make it look a lot different, much cleaner.
So I have a question for you. In your license letter email that we have here, it says, further efforts to minimize the environmental impact include informing guests prior to their arrival of the importance of protecting and preserving the surrounding crypto. I assume, written between the lines here, but I assume that means, you know, picking up after yourself, you pack it in, pack it out.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so I wish I could have included Hip Camp. Just, if you were to just Google Hip Camp, Where the Wild Things Camp, you can see it. And it says in, in many places, pack it in, pack it out. I do provide trash cans for those who don't, you know, and I check them often. Every time I go into town, I take trash, and so. But I do, I, I, and I'm always there, like, whenever I have guests, I try, was trying to be there. And I didn't even know if I was going to do it this year, you know, because last year was, didn't go, it's not that great. It's not nothing to live off of, you know. But this year, I think I am going to have somebody there that will be there full-time if it works out. And, and so to answer that question, too. And then, yeah, my other question was going to be is, is, yeah, where can I put signs? Is once this, you know, can I put signs? And then I'll help with, you know, because I did have some traffic go into their, into their parking lot.
So the, the information provided to the guests is all from the website?
Well, it's from what I, on my description, you know, and it just lets them know, you know, about the surrounding area. You know, the crypto, the dirt, and where they can hike on the private and where they can't.
So they'll read all that prior to applying for?
It's in the descriptions, and you, and like I said, you can get on there and see all that on Hip Camp.
Cool, thank you.
I have a question. What is physically there for somebody when they come at a campsite?
There's a bench, a fire ring, just a bench and a firing at most, pretty much all of them. Some of them have two benches and a table.
Bench.
And a fired hip ring.
Table.
Some of them have a table so far, but it's very, very, very primitive, very basic. You know, most people bring their own everything, chairs. I have some stumps around for chairs, you know, and.
And then you have some porta-potties there.
I've got the porta-potties.
Supply any water?
The only water, there's a spring out there, and I do supr- put non-podable water for firewater. For if they have a firewater, for fire. Yeah, you know what I mean?
As a country boy raised in San Juan County, I don't get it. They just camp anywhere I want.
Yeah, so that.
That's just a comp, I mean, that has nothing to do with.
And that, and you're right, and that's, it's, you know, it's to my benefit, I guess, because a lot of people were coming from East Coast and other countries, or other states. I mean, they don't have the BLM like we do, and so they have to get permission to camp anywhere, or have to be in a campground. So I do get a lot of people that they just, and they don't know that they can camp forty feet outside the gate, you know. But I, but then again, they do have a toilet, they have safety, they have somebody there to watch their stuff. They can leave their tent up. It won't disappear, you know.
How do you even find it? I'm looking for it.
Uh, just on Google, Hip Camp.
I'm in Hip, I'm in Hip Camp, but where do I find your site?
Where the Wild Things Camp.
Okay. Is it marketed as car camping, not RVs, right?
Uh, they're, RVs can, it's boondocking for, like, so RVs could just pull up on, and camp also.
So you have parking spaces?
Uh, yeah, like, um, flat spots, yeah. It shows, yeah, some pictures on the camp, or on the website of that also. So like, I guess on the, yeah, on the upper flat spot.
We did have a big discussion about roads, because DJ was involved.
I think we, does suppression.
Well, and then we had to cancel that because it was a county road, and they couldn't touch a county road. So it went back and forth.
Our tanks, we had them show us what, what.
Do we have some noise ordinance?
I was thinking about the proximity of the two camps. What's the distance between under Canvas and.
I guess, yeah, their closest tent is probably just, just under a quarter mile. It's not a problem. I just didn't know if, you know, because I didn't know if I could just go put a sign up. I didn't know if they wanted me to put one up, like, on their turn.
I would just recommend, yeah, noise, noise ordinance, as we're discussing now. Uh, signage, we have questions around signage, just for that same reason that you brought up, in that cars do come down to our facility. They're lost, they don't know where to go. It's not a clear way to find the location besides the easement. So our questions are around where that signage would live, because the easement cuts right through our property and the BLM property. And then our fencing would be something that we would appreciate as well, a fencing requirement. Um, just in that we can see from the property, from our lobby space. So again, back to the harmonious piece, right now, the visuals aren't, aren't the best from, from our location. Those, those would be, you know, the, the pieces that are concerning for me as the operator. It's just that, you know, noise, we're held to those restrictions, you know, we would want the same thing. And, yeah, just understanding what signage might look like to make sure that the guests are getting to the appropriate area.
Dean, so settler would permit him to put a sign?
Possibly. We haven't been approached. We don't have an application.
I'm just asking, that, that would be his approach, possibly.
It's, it's very possible, especially if it helps our lessee, you know, keep people where they need to go. But like I said, we haven't been approached, and it's one of the deficiencies, I think, in this permit currently.
And if he chooses to put up a fence, you could put signage on your fence.
A question about the fence. So we still would like to put horses out there, Lowry would. But they haven't finished their fence around their property, so our horses would go up into their tents, so out of respect for them, we didn't put horses out there this year. Just so you know about the fence.
It might well be that the fence is their responsibility.
It is. Yeah, as far as Lowry, I'm sorry, from what I was told, Larry.
County, the county's a fence.
The county is a fence, yeah.
Yeah.
You have livestock, you're required to fence it, and that's the, what they call common law, you know. But the county's in the process of working on an ordinance to make some changes there.
But we have worked really well with Lowry on fencing. We provided materials, if you provide the labor. We'll continue to work on fencing. That's not a major concern. And so we can, we can come to agreements on those. We, we do need to be good neighbors, but there are some things that we still need to figure out. Before this gets approved, in my opinion.
And how does under Canvas's customers arrive? Just, is it all by vehicle?
All by vehicle, yeah.
Nobody's flying in?
Nope.
There's no, there's no secret helipad over there.
I would actually change your description online, because you are claiming it's twenty-five acres.
Right, that's because I don't want people to, to, what's that?
It'll be taxed. It'll be taken out of the green belt. Twenty-five acres, that's what you're advertising as part of this commercial project.
Right. Is that, I didn't, see, that's all stuff I need to learn. I'm not, so like on Hip Camp.
Just put down a million acres you can hike all over the BLM.
Then you'll get taxed for it.
Yeah, I just didn't want people going in, because it is a primitive camping experience, like, that we, we tell people. This is like going out, you know, just like camping, you know, and, and so I didn't want them, some people don't, don't go in my, my designated spots. And that's okay as long as, with me, as long as they're going, not like trashing things, and so I don't want them going all everywhere.
Do you want to point out that you have a ninety-eight percent positive feedback? I mean, that's pretty impressive with sixty-six reviews.
Oh, of course. Hello?
I have another question for the administration. In your possible, what? Do you want me to direct it to him, not to you? Uh, in the possible conditions to consider. It says, comply with building code and, and permit requirements, including fire suppression plan for campsites. Why does it say it like that instead of comply with fire codes or?
Because they're not actually building anything.
So it wouldn't apply.
So once they build something, anything, then it has to uphold a building codes.
So what fire suppression are we looking at for campsites? Doesn't exist.
I mean, on, on like Kyle Link for his property, and we actually designated a gallon, a gallons per minute or something.
But that would be in the fire code.
That was in the well ran interference code. That's over a certain elevation.
But for, for this, and having fire rings makes a difference too. So I'm not sure, we, we could, if you want to be that specific, we could specify you need this many gallons on holding or.
Oh, please, what's going to burn? I'll give you five gallons of diesel, and you can go for it.
Oh, it's, it's one of those things.
So, so, yeah, I mean, we could, but where does, and it sounds like there's already some non-podable fire suppression on site. And, you know, whether we were doing that as being adequate enough or not.
Well, not, I know like.
Getting refilled, if people are using them willy-nilly to put out fires at night, are they getting refilled for the next set?
Yeah, and I don't know off the top of my head what the fire code actually says, but I also know that that, it covers the emergency response thing too. So that's like the, the condition of the roads and the width and that kind of stuff is, is all in the fire code as well. So that would cover not just how many gallons of water you would need to store. But, yeah, just a question.
I'm just not sure what all, even with the road. I'm just not sure what all, even with the, the road, I'm just not sure all that applies, where this is a primitive, nothing's.
But it's being used as a commercial, that's, that's what changes it, because now you are dealing with the public and it's transient. So, I mean, it's no longer a residence or anything like that, you've commercialized it, so it does change everything. It's all about public safety.
You know how long this meeting will go if I do that?
No, correct, so we, and, and part of my duties looking downstream here. Is to go out and do more field inspections, and so we'll actually have a checklist of things to look forward. And we'll actually, boots on the ground, go follow up.
Kristen, I have a question, if, if, so, so Stephen right now is, has already done this. And so if, and we've got this conditional use proposal. Um, if, if, if we were to, you know, ask for more information at the next meeting or something like that. Um, would he still be able to run his facility? So he is shut down pending this decision.
And we have a, we have a lot of people in this bag where they're, they're non compliant. It's not non conforming, it's non compliant, and so we send a letter, and a lot of people don't know. And so we send a letter, hey, you need to get a conditional use, and here's our process to getting a business license. And that's a lot of our applicants that you have seen over the last few months have been that, oh, I didn't know, I got this letter and I'm here.
Trying to get sure compliance.
And so we, we do, I want to stress that we do want to try to work with people who are attempting to become compliant.
I was gonna say, I thought this was it, alright, nevermind.
No, you got one more step.
This is it, this is that one, so this is that one, the permit.
We've seen several after the past few months, whether you were aware of it or not, that the reason why they came in was because they got that letter. Saying you were not compliant, and we need to get you there.
So the, the TRT tax comes from the app, the hip camp, so I mean. So, the state first and then the county, or they go the county, I don't know how that.
It goes to the state and back to the county.
So I'm just saying, so, so, I mean, he's not, that's why he doesn't have a business license, cause that hasn't been. Cause he doesn't have one, but that's how the TRT tax is being paid.
So, he's probably paying taxes right now?
You can pay tax without having a license, all day long.
No, I'm just saying, that, that's how, like, where all the stages you've put together, those, those taxes have been paid.
Are paying taxes to us, and they might not be in compliance, they might not have business license.
Right.
But the way the Airbnb is set up, they make sure that you pay your taxes, and hip camp does the same way, they make sure that those taxes get collected.
Any other questions? Any other conditions that you would like to put in?
I want to make a comment for, for the, if you're done with questions and. You're ready to start here? Are you ready to start your decision making and your commission? So just, this is just my comment to you, um. You can approve this based on how the commission fills for a conditional use permit, what's appropriate for a campground. Cody hit on this earlier, you know, you've got a five star campground out there, that doesn't mean everyone has to have a five star campground. So you can, you can just go through your conditions, and harmonious is, um. Not a fixed concept necessarily, so, um, uh, all I'm saying is you, you wanna, you wanna. Hold people to the same standard, to an extended hotel, good guideline. All hotels have certain things that are basically the same. But yet they're very different in what they offer, how they look, what they cost, so on and so forth, so, I don't. The law doesn't require you to, to go too far out there to approve a, a concept like this, I mean, you all know what would be okay. Would be required for campground, things like the road, the tax question. Um, some of the health department requirements, you know, those can be conditions that are more or less unknown exactly what they mean today. But you say required to follow or meet whatever conditions are, and then you, so, I, I just wanted to make sure you, you didn't have to know. How wide the road has to be, exactly what the health department would require, um, the amount of water for fire. Prevention of spreading fires and so forth, you can, you can have those conditions in there, so those details get brought up later. You know, the tax question is probably a really good one. I don't know that we've ever done this as a county, how we.
Must comply with assessor's assessment?
The concept of taking a break out of green belt for a project like this.
I'm not sure, Maggie can correct this, I'm not sure that we need that as part of the conditional use at all, because it is. It is in the tax record assessment, and that's part of the assessor's duty.
So, yeah, I suppose you're, I suppose you're right, other than, um, the applicant may want to know the. Consequences of this being approved from a tax perspective, so I guess that's their responsibility.
That's why I brought it up, cause I mean.
However, can't we, not saying this is how it's gonna go, but if, even if we approve it tonight. It doesn't automatically put him in that arena for the assessor, the assessor's actually gonna go get eyes on it. So if, as they're rolling it around, they decide, whoa, this is, this is gonna go get too expensive. And we've decided to abandon this idea, even though we were approved for it, um, that is when the assessor would.
Do you understand what this is, we're talking about here? Yeah, yeah, I might be paying more taxes than I would be.
Because, yeah, because you changed the use out of green belt, you will have to. Pay the rollback greenback belt tax on this, and then the property would then therefore. From existence on, be taxed as your commercial use.
But that's just the part that I'm using, just the, the twenty-five acres I'm using, right?
The whole twenty-five acres would be in rollback and.
I'm leasing twenty-five acres, but I'm only probably using two or three for the campground, and that's.
Unless you subdivided it, it would apply to the whole entire parcel. Yeah, so, so we may want to, just kind of going back to Melissa's comments, you could table this item and we can work with the applicant a little bit further. So that they fully understand, if it's not subdivided and we make this change, the change is from. Today, the, say you did approve it, it would be from today, so it would include the whole entire parcel, and so. Maybe that would be, uh, just a good opportunity, just let's pause, breathe, talk to the applicant, talk to the landowner. So that they really truly know the implications of everything.
So, I have a quick question, just on the commercial aspect of the twenty-five acres. So if you build a house, which I've done on a hundred and sixty acres. Like we talked about previous, once you get your building permit, a year comes up, that is, the assessor just withdraws. It doesn't describe, doesn't change anything, just on your assessment, it withdraws one acre. From the hundred and sixty, the other hundred and fifty-nine remain greenbelt without me having to do anything, at least this is my. Nope.
Cause of the minor.
Not anymore, no, you have to, when, once you pull one, you have to go back into your, your assessor the next year, the.
And this house.
Summer bills are going. Then you have to go back in there and reclaim the other remaining acres for greenbelt, otherwise, everything just goes.
Yeah, the whole greenbelt is dissolved and you have to go reapply.
You have to reclaim and reapply for the rest of it to go back in greenbelt, so that one acre you pulled out.
I didn't pull it out.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying.
Assessed the lot.
Well, they have to, because you put a, you put a home on it, so now you've, you've pulled that out of greenbelt. But if you do not go back in and apply, um, they're gonna pull all hundred and sixty acres out.
That's just not what I found, though, I mean, maybe, I'm just saying, that's not my, my assist taxes was, wasn't that.
We can check on it, we can, we can look at both angles and see.
My point is, I'll get around to you, it's like, really, why do you need twenty-five? I mean, if your camp sites.
Small, like.
If your campsites are literally on one or two acres.
I only put twenty-five because that's what I'm trying to buy from Lowry in the future, like, that's what my lease, that's what we're gonna eventually kind of.
I'm just, yeah, I just guess I'm just trying to make that comment to you, that you probably in no way, shape or form want to take on twenty-five. If you're only got campsites on one or two acres.
Yeah, I would like to change that, I mean, like, if he said if that's gonna make the taxes from today different, based on that twenty, that number twenty-five, I would. Definitely like to, I have got to talk to Lowry about that, and, yeah, cause he's. I can't make that, I can't raise his taxes for this.
Sounds good, so I'll make a motion, we table this until next month, and why don't you investigate that stuff? And with your leasie, leaser, lessor? Um, and then, if you'd like to revisit it, we'll, we'll revisit it next month, if, anyways, I'd like to make that motion if I could.
Second.
Motion by Cody, Melissa seconded, she peaches.
I don't know.
To table this item.
We replay that.
Till next month. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. My goodness. Three items, people.
I was hoping to go grocery shopping.
We've done one.
What happens when Trent runs a meeting?
Alright, we'll get to this next one real quick, you ready? Okay, here we go, I'm not going to, uh. We'll try to keep this briefer, okay, consideration and approval for a temporary conditional use application. For an RV trailer extension during home build located at three oh four Bobby Lane in La Salle by Victor Nah- Nahara. And he is not here.
No presenter.
Okay, and he might have tried to get online, so I'll, I will just pitch what I know and we'll go from there. Um, he has put in for an application for a, for his property that he owns for an RV trailer. It is a fifth wheel trailer that will be used as living quarters while building a house. Um, there are no hookups currently, he expects hookups for electric, water and septic within two months of starting construction. And then up until that point, um, he will be dumping responsibly offsite until the utilities are installed. Um, once the home is constructed, the RV trailer temporary setup will be disassembled. Uh, this property is in the rural residential zone from Highway forty-six, um, off, in La Salle. Um, under the rural residential use district, temporary buildings for uses incidental to construction work. Including living quarters for a guard or night watchman, such as, such buildings must be removed upon completion. Or abandonment of the construction work are permitted as a conditional use. Um, a temporary permit means that they have six months, and it can be extended up to three times. So that means that they have a total of twenty-four months, he believes he can have construction done within eighteen months. Um, which means he would be using all three of his extensions. Um, in authorizing, there's your standard conditional use, you need to protect property and welfare and adjacencies. Um, possible considerations to consider. Must protect any existing well water sources from contamination, must comply with Utah Division of Drinking Water. Um, requirements for any water storage tanks on site, must comply with all building code and permit requirements, must comply with San Juan County Health Department requirements. And must comply with San Juan County business license requirements, um, his project will be an owner builder. Uh, so he's, it'll take him a little bit longer.
You, you realize that forty percent of the houses in New La Salle is actually a camper underneath a roof?
He's not doing that. He's not doing that, so. Yeah, here's a quick sketch, just about where his, his utilities will be coming in. Um, he's basically gonna be having the, the trailer up towards the front of the yard, building the house in the back. And then, like he said, dismantling that whole bit once the home is completed.
I move that we approve this.
Thanks for moving us forward so well.
Uh, I move that we approve this with the conditions, do I need to read them out loud?
That Kristen stated.
That Kristen stated.
Perfect.
That Kristen previously stated.
Usually Cody likes to reread them.
We always.
Except, yeah, if it was Cody, then.
I'll second that.
Didn't you already second it? Let, let's get Shay in there.
I don't know, let's go back to the instant replay.
Okay, got a motion and second to approve this, I will just say one thing, I. Struggle with putting a fifth wheel trailer on a piece of property without a septic system.
I do too.
I don't, I just put a fifty-five gallon drum in the ground, I mean.
He did say in his proposal that within two months, he will have water, septic and electric.
Do you just leach it out of the fifty-five gallon barrel?
You punch holes in it. Did the ass on who shuts him down if it don't happen, because the.
That cop.
At some point, our enforcement officer.
Is killing us.
So right now, I am the enforcement and I'm drowning in the office, but.
Just sign Lloyd's name to the bottom of those.
Yes, I have a quick, quick, so he's, he's got a building permit for the home, correct? I, I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
Not yet.
But he's working on it.
Step one, if, if this goes, then he gets a building permit for the house. At some point, around two months, we'll take a drive and go make sure that he's got his hookups in.
Okay.
Or by then, Ben will probably be out there to see that he has his hookups in.
It is a permit for a, a meter and, yeah, hookups, so I'll be out there at least.
He's already starting on getting things going.
You put Ben last on here just to come.
No, I did, I told him, I told him sorry, I told him sorry.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, poor Ben.
John taught me the fifty-five gallon drum trick.
I know.
That would be, yeah.
Yep, I know.
Years ago.
Alright. That's my best right hand man, okay, review of Conco subdivision, this is for consideration recommendation. Um, no, there is not a major subdivision, but this is not a minor subdivision, so this will be recommending for county commission approval. Um, this proposed subdivision is located approximately two miles southeast of Recapture Reservoir. With access from Highway one ninety-one to Mustang Road, the proposal is approximately a hundred and forty acres split into six lots. Of varying size, maintaining two existing residences, and you can see the, the preliminary there. Some of our notes from our preliminary plat review, um, we'd like to see the houses being shown on there, so we can maintain setbacks. And there also needs to be a disclaimer, uh, that this is not intended for over, or this cannot. Have overnight rentals as the, or net stands. So we have a few.
I disagree on the setbacks, cause that's part of your building permit, when you go to build.
We typically want to see existing, it's existing, so, so if anything's existing, we want to make sure that they're not getting the lot lines too close. Um, so we have reviewed this in preliminary review with our, our plat review team, um. And that's all we, we found, this one was pretty polished, so just a few little, little notes.
I am not opposing my building.
If you have any questions.
My house is in lot one, we've lived there, we have water or well, septic, and we're on solar. Lot five also has an existing home that was, well, it's still under construction right now. Um, and that is ADU currently, but.
Did they get a building permit?
They did get a building permit, uh, so, and that's in my name. They did get a building permit, uh, so and that's in my name. I'm probably gonna finish the fencing on there and my brother and I are both gonna put. Probably a max of like ten cows on there, but my brother may put a. Cabin on his forty acres that he's going to buy from me and lot five is actually gonna be purchased from my uh, my wife's sister, so it's gonna be a little family. Out there.
Who got stuck down on the corner of lot one?
Oh, that's where my house is right now. And so, yeah, I I split that to five acres, because that's what goes with my house and the mortgage. But then the rest of all of it's just gonna stay mine too, but.
I like how you separate yourself from your family.
Yeah. Yeah.
Big hill between them.
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't have a fly in the other end.
Nope, just on the five acres, yep.
That's smart business.
Okay, can we approve this being preliminary?
With the notes that you brought up.
Well, recommend.
Recommend.
Yes, okay, approve to recommend.
No, recommend to approve.
Right. No, I'm approving to recommend it.
Okay, any other staff? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Tomco. Or to recommend the Tomco preliminary plat subdivision. Well, we reviewed it, so we're trying to recommend the Tomco subdivision, correct?
To the county commissioner.
To the county commissioner.
With the notes. Or you don't have to, I'm just saying, this is what. Administration.
Okay, with the notes provided by the administration that um. Lot one and lot five need to show existing structures without further comments?
There were no further comments from the preliminary. And then we also need to add the language.
It's just the way that was worded. Um, and that language needs to be added to the plat regarding overnight rentals not being a permitted use and is the A one zoning. Language to the plat prior to finalization.
Why?
Because of many a lawsuit that is now being required on all subdivision plats. Until otherwise noted, Lloyd. Cause I said so.
Cause I said so.
No, uh, that did come out of uh, the legalities that we've been having and so. Uh, just so that is crystal clear for current landowners and anyone prospecting to buy, it is recorded on the plat. That this is not able to be an overnight rental property. Right now.
In A one.
So. If you change the ordinance on that piece of property in the future.
To go sticky note.
The owner has to go back and re-record that with it removed?
Just a notice from the county's side.
You can, so it's an amendment to the plat by the county.
It's really not an amendment to the plat, the notes are just.
But if it's on the plat and it's recorded that way, you would have to amend that, right?
It's like an amendment to the note, it just it just says that overnight rentals are now allowed in this zone.
Okay.
It's okay.
Yes, I thought about that because we might be making.
More work in the future.
Right, but.
You could also.
It is a simple fix in the recorder's office.
And I don't even know if it has to be re-recorded because it's at this current time that it's recorded. Under this zoning, it's not permitted to have overnight rentals. And so then you fast forward in time, but and you look at that note on there, it's like, okay, is it permitted now? And so.
That's where I get.
Now you have to do your due diligence to make sure that it is permissible.
So we're siding on the air of caution versus the free throw.
So right now when it's recorded as a final, then it's not prohibited.
You could also just instead of putting it on the plat, just record notice on the property.
Yes, absolutely.
You see that all the time in different counties.
Yeah.
This property is not allowed for basement rental or it is allowed if it qualifies or. But then people can also come, I mean, maybe not this one, but there are conditional uses, they could come and apply for.
It's permitted.
And those are also recorded with the properties. We felt like the plat was the surest way to get the information to someone doing due diligence and it wouldn't be missed as a separate item.
I second that.
Well, Gad, you could have done that ten minutes ago.
I know, but I just wanted to know why if we had something new, nobody else asked.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, I'm not gonna repeat the uh, staff. Uh, narrative, but uh, to recommend to the county commission. To approve the Tomco subdivision, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, he said to go skip the next four inspections now.
Okay, we're not done yet, everybody just adjourns after this.
We know, I know we still got.
Okay, building permits.
Building permits.
Quickly, and then we can adjourn.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This one with the tower, they're going to replace the tower, can they go any higher or do they have to keep it at the same height?
The one in Monument Valley?
Yeah.
Um, so they are not. They're not doing any structure, they're literally taking some equipment off of it and putting other equipment on it.
Okay.
So the structures there.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, thanks Ben.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Uh, that's two four oh oh seven, keep an eye.
What?
I just said keep an eye.
Is that you running the mouse?
See when he drives, I'm like.
We were kinda on that right then.
We need to do billing permits first so everybody doesn't just get their coat on and walk out. Okay, any other questions on billing permits? We're good? We're good? We're good, okay. We don't have to do anything with it, that's just uh, asking questions, somebody get us out of here, please.
Oh.
I make a motion, we move, uh, we adjourn. We get out.
We move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 You can have that, John, if you want.
I think I didn't get one.
Put Shay down.
Hold it, it's just a second. Can I? Talk to to all of us illegally or is that that a meeting again? I'm just.
What are we talking about?
Strike the adjournment, we have one more public comment.
No, I don't want it to be a public comment.
Well, whatever.
I just wanna talk about me. Resigning from this board. And.
No, you're good.
And uh. Cause Tom, Tom Garz, he has applied for this.
Yes.
There's two or three things that's very important, I'd love to see that map and make sure that we set some little subdivisions aside. Out in Listetelle where my mom, my constituents are really, really onto that. And fix and the things that you're aware of out there. And really has to be handled and I'd like to get that 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 conditional use permit pulled from them people that were gonna build that. Hummingbird camp park, they've done nothing we ask them to do and they're just making a mess there. And so I'd like to, I would like to keep Tom. In the wings, if you don't mind waiting a month or two till we can handle a couple of these things.
Sure.
Because I'm getting old.
Good with that.
And I'm gonna go up to the gorge again and I hate to have to come back every month like I did last year. So I don't mind my mind resigning, it's. Time, but I'd like to make sure that some people is keeping track of that and get 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 some things handled.
And I'll I'll defer to that.
So let us follow the bylaws, we'll bring you in, have the interview, make the decision, transfer, so. We'll be able to involve, we'll have you there as well. Okay, Ben. And so then we'll just go through the bylaw motions.
The interviews.
And then have the commission formalize the reappointment.
So you're asking, can you be selective down the line of what you're signing?
Well, I'm. Asking that maybe this ought to be postponed a month or two, so I can uh. See if we ever get that map, we can really look at and if we could be be involved in saying, we want these subdivisions. To set aside where they can't be be uh, being approached on with camp parks.
When does John expire?
How do we do that?
Will he expire?
Okay, so you expired at the end of the year.
And so we need.
Next year or last year, right.
So the process, so the process would be the interview, you go and do the interview, both of you, which one already has.
One already has.
You do the interview, if they choose you, you can take your position, hold it and then resign and then he would have to re-put in for it. You could call him and just say. But there's a chance that he might interview better than you and you're out anyway, so.
I mean, I'm prepared to back off.
Right, so so that's the process.
Okay, just a question, wasn't John reappointed because there was nobody to fill that position, so doesn't he currently hold the seat?
So we haven't taken. Tran, let's see. So we didn't have anybody for Cody's. So we haven't taken Cody's reappointment back to Christian yet and in this time, we've re- we've received another applicant letter.
Okay, so it.
And so that kicks us into this process, so.
Me and Trent are at the end of this year, right? I think me and Trent are about eighteen years now.
When you get county commission. But most of that eighteen years are closed.
Yeah.
And.
What's the weather?
Bye, I was happy to do it. Did you know it's long drive?
I did not know that.
Yeah.
I'm not older, I'm old.
Lloyd, don't ask me hard questions, okay?
Like what?
I will see you next year.
Well, I know, I just want to make sure that I start addressing it, see you there.
No.
I want to address things before we change this map.
I'm gonna be moving up to the. George about being the mayor again.
Your boat or Clark's boat?
My boat.
Okay.
And my. And the last year I timed all of my trips back.